Okay, it is now seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and begin the city council meeting for this evening. Madam Clerk, would you start by a roll call for this meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Rocha.
Is your microphone on? Okay.
Councilmember Freitas?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Priton Rocha?
Here.
Councilmember George Walker? Mayor Bernal? We have a forum with Councilwoman George Walker and Mayor Bernal Ashton at the time.
Okay, will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? As we begin tonight's meeting, are there any public comments? On, I'm sorry, on unengagized items, public comments?
Yes, thank you. We have three written public comments. First one is Melissa Case, followed by Leslie May and Kevin McInnaman. Do we get five minutes since there's no one here? I want to spend my three minutes talking about economic development, not in theory, but in a way that reflects Antioch's potential and the standards that some of you've committed yourselves to. When residents like myself come forward with ideas for economic growth, the response should never be, "Why don't you look into it?" I'm not Andrew Becker. I don't have staff or a research team. I'm just a resident who cares deeply. And frankly, there's worse things to be, right? So when elected officials respond that way, it signals something deeper to me. A lack of initiative from people who do not have, that do have the access to power and resources. Our last mayor gave me this exact reply, and when I heard it again recently, well, it triggered a little political PTSD in me. I am, I truly believe that some of you on council are selling Antioch short. Downtown development was much needed, no question, but lately it feels like downtown is the entire focus, while the rest of the city, especially my part of town, is treated like a forgotten middle child. We've got over 1,300 units coming to districts two and four and more in District Three. That's real momentum. You should be leveraging that and bring in new economic opportunities, not just letting it all unfold without a broader strategy. Look, I know you're not doing this job for the money, and some of you aren't doing it for a career in higher office. You're here because you also care, and I want to acknowledge that even in the same breath while I'm whining at you tonight. You deserve appreciation and accountability. I emailed many of you with concerns about infrastructure tied to this new development, and even a simple "thanks" for your email that I never got. I get that you can't comment really at meetings, but the ongoing silence is starting to feel dismissive, even if it's not meant to be that way. Maybe it's just the ghost of past councils haunting me. But I want to talk about In Shape for a little bit. Remember that developer that said, "I'm trying hard for Antioch. I'm invested in Antioch." Well, he's now selling that gem. You got got. He dangled the drive-through or nothing scenario, and a lot of you bought into it. That whole "I'll just let it sit here for 20 more years" line, that wasn't a negotiation. That was a threat. His commitment wasn't to Antioch. It was to his own profit, and I saw right through it. We need to stop settling for short-term dollars and start building long-term value. Bessie's not here, but I'm gonna skip that part. Y'all ran on promises of smart development, and now that the budget's handled and safety is finally being addressed, economic development should be next. Don't sell Antioch short. We don't need another cannabis shop, another drive-through, or some copy-and-paste businesses. I have ideas, not just critique. IKEA Planning Studio, Total Wine &amp; More, Northern Tool and Equipment, Living Spaces, Alamo Drafthouse Cinema, Tesla Service Center. I got more, too. Leslie May?
Surprisingly, I support what she said about the businesses, so some of the ones she named are ones I brought here. I want to speak about two different things tonight that is really upsetting to me. We are defunding programs here in Antioch. We defunded, you guys, not we, the council defunded the teen exploration camp. That is a camp that goes on every year. A lot of the teens in this city attend, especially the foster youth here in Antioch. And when my clients came and said, "We're not going," because they defunded it this year, I was very disappointed. Also, you've cut Angelo Quinto Crisis Response Team funding in half. Okay. I don't understand this. While the mayor forced his way to the Chichibu, Japan trip, he was not going. He was not supposed to be going. The person who was supposed to be going was Tamisha Torres Walker and, I believe, Brad, I'm not sure who was, what is, anyway. Plus, the other group of people. He did not go until after the meeting where you guys said, he didn't want to go until after the meeting where they chose and said who was going. Then he turned around and ran to Brad, said he wanted to go. Brad said, "There was not money for it." So he went to Bessie and pushed on Bessie and then threatened for Tamisha Torres Walker not to go when it's her turn to go. It was her turn to go, and she's the first person who said she would go when the whole council took over. So he threatened to have her not go if he couldn't go, and they went on here to pay for it. If we have a budget crisis, why are you paying for someone to go to Chichibu, Japan? My grandson has been twice. I know how much it cost him because he came and got into my pockets to help. So this doesn't make sense. My second issue is, why is APD involved in the recall campaign of Diana Beckton? We are under consent decree, so they have no business backing a recall. APD doesn't. They have no business taking a side in this. We haven't even met, as I believe Councilmember Freitas said last time. Some of the things were supposed to be done in six months, and we haven't done it. So why is APD turning around and taking a side on backing a recall? Now, I understand the families hurt. I understand their pain. I have children, grandchildren. I would just die. It's something like that, or I feel like dying. I won't say I died, but I feel like dying. But no attorney will take their case, so now they're going after Diana Beckton, who's a black woman?
Kevin?
Hello. I'm Kevin McManman, a resident of Antioch and a board member of We Get It Foundation. On April 8th, 2025, the City of Antioch officially recognized We Get It Foundation during autism awareness month with a formal proclamation honoring our commitment to our neurodiversity and community support. We are deeply honored by this acknowledgement, which underscores our ongoing work empowering neurodivergent individuals and families. However, we were surprised and disappointed to learn that despite the recognition, the city did not extend an invitation to let us participate in the upcoming Antioch Nonprofit Expo on Sunday, July 27, 2025. The Antioch Community Center, the Expo will feature over 30 community organizations and offers vital networking and visibility opportunities presented to an invaluable platform for nonprofits to connect with other people in the public. As advocates and community leaders promoting neurodivergent inclusion, we believe our absence is not merely an oversight, but a missed opportunity by not including We Get It Foundation. The city limits the visibility and resources available to many families whose voices are already underrepresented. We respectfully urge the City of Antioch to reconsider its outreach approach and ensure that the contributions of neurodivergent-focused nonprofits are fully recognized and supported in the future. Inclusion isn't about a good policy. It's a fundamental to building a community where every voice matters. Thank you.
No other public comments received?
Okay, moving on to announcements of civic and community events. Do we have any announcements? Okay.
Leslie May?
Go ahead.
The chief, can you hear me? Okay. I contacted him because I said that I wanted him to have a blood drive if Antioch could do a blood drive. One of our committee members is going to have surgery at Stanford. So Stanford advertised on TV a week ago, they were low on all blood. They said, "We need anybody we can to get some blood drives." There's been a lot of casualties. There's been a lot of things, a lot of surgeries, and they're low on blood. So if we can, I would like for the city council to contact Stanford Hospital and participate in a blood drive of all types. And as I say, one of our committee members, Tashina Garrett, will be having surgery to replace that quarter of a skull that was removed when she had a stroke. She's having that on the 5th of August. So I would like to try to get us involved. We can do some blood drives, do something good for the community. Thank you.
Are there any other civic or community events?
No other ones.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on. City Council Committee Reports, Communications?
Nothing to report out?
Nothing for me to report out either. We haven't had any of our committee meetings. I know we have Tri Delta tomorrow and some other meetings coming up, so no report at this time. Okay, Mayor's Comments. While the mayor is not here this evening, he's part of the delegation to Chichibu, Japan, on the exchange program, so we'll go ahead and move forward. Consent calendar for city council members tonight. On the consent calendar we have listed, is there any items that anybody would like to pull?
None from the public. Second?
Okay, let's go ahead and move forward for both. I don't see your light on. There you go.
The consent calendar passes 3-0.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearing. I will have our report come up, and then if I could, I'd like to have our city attorney just review public hearing rules, guidelines as we move in that direction. Want to do that now?
Yes, I will do that.
Yeah, well, I thought that's what, so tonight we're gonna be doing a public hearing, and so that's why I was asking about making sure that we go over the rules of how we're gonna conduct that. Tonight, Item 2, Public Hearing to Confirm and Levy Annual Assessments for Street Light and Landscape Maintenance Districts 1, 2A, 4, 5, 9, and 10 for fiscal year 2025, PW500. So at this time, are you gonna be able to present?
Yes, I will go ahead and read in the public hearing advisement. So during public hearings, each side is entitled to one main presenter who may not speak for more than 10 minutes. All other speakers during public hearing items are entitled to a maximum of five minutes. These time limits may be modified depending on the number of speakers or number of items on the agenda at the vice mayor's discretion. Groups who are here regarding an item may identify themselves by raising their hands at the appropriate time to show support for one of the speakers. During certain types of hearings, the applicant is allowed to give their presentation first. After all testimony is received, the applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal. After having heard from the public, the agenda item will be closed. Deliberations will then be limited to members of the city council.
Okay, so at this time, we belong to start the public hearing? Just gonna go, and then we do it, okay?
Thank you, City Council. Yes, thank you. The city's street light and landscaping assessment districts are a funding mechanism used to fund the maintenance of various landscaping improvements in the city. The city annually levies assessments to contribute towards the costs associated with maintaining, operating, and servicing these improvements. In order to levy assessments, there is an annual process required that is outlined by state statute, commonly known as the 1972 Act, which must be completed prior to the county deadline of August 10th of each year in order to place the assessments on the Contra Costa County Property Tax Bill. The city council completes this process annually through the taking, through actions taken at three council meetings. On March 11th of this year, the city council adopted a resolution to initiate proceedings and directed the preparation of the annual engineer's report. The second action occurred on July 8th, when the city council adopted a resolution accepting the engineer's report and setting the date and time of the annual public hearing for July 22nd. The third action, which is occurring this evening, requires the council to hold a public hearing and take public testimony. Following the closing of the public hearing, staff requests the council consider the approval of the resolution authorizing the levying of the assessments for fiscal year 2526. Related to tonight's actions, there are a couple items I'd like to highlight. There are no proposed increases in the assessment rates, and authorizing the levy of these assessments will generate approximately $2.3 million in fiscal year 2526 revenue. Like prior years, staff requests council to conduct the scheduled and notice public hearing and then adopt a resolution authorizing and levying and placing the assessments on the Contra Costa County Property Tax Bill. This concludes my presentation. I am here, as well as our consultant, Brian Brown from Clear Source Financial. We can answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Now we'll open up the public hearing, and so my understanding is the proponent has 10 minutes to speak to this item?
So in this, in this setting, I think the city would be the proponent, so we can now proceed with an opponent's presentation.
Do we have an opponent?
Our opponent is Andrew Becker tonight?
Thank you. Me and my family moved to Antioch in 1996 into a new home in the Laurel Ridge subdivision off of Pruitt Ranch in Deer Valley. And in 2000, 2001 time period, I remember, because I was just going into middle school, my parents said, "We're all gonna gather some lawn equipment, gardening equipment, and we're gonna go down the street. We're gonna clean up those hedges that are there on the corner of Pruitt Ranch and 49er." And us kids, we complained, "Why do we have to do it? There should be other people that do it." And my parents said, "If you want to live somewhere, you should take pride in where you live, whether it's your property or somebody else's." And in this case, it was city property, so it was everyone's property. And so I can remember going down there and looking at those hedges after they were cut and feeling a sense of pride in myself and in my parents, feeling like we actually contributed to our community, the people around us. And now I sit here at these meetings, and I hear about these assessments, and I read back on these assessments, and I wonder why, when Pruitt Ranch was designed specifically to serve the needs of those homes that were built in the 90s and into the 2000s by the McBale Company and Richland and Davidon and KB and all these different developers and builders, right? And these assessments were put on the property? How, just four years, five years after my house was built, these medians were in such a disrepair that the residents themselves had to go out and maintain them? And then how are we here now, 25 years later, and we look at these assessments and we understand that our assessments still don't cover the costs, and we're moving them over from other funds? And then I'm even more confused because I can remember going back and seeing how mellow roost taxes and assessment fee taxes were offset by general funds and water funds and redevelopment agency project area funds. But then, when I reached out to the finance department, I was told that that wasn't true. So what was used to offset those assessment fees and those mellow roost deficits? Was it general funds? Was it reserves? Was there never deficits? Am I wrong? Because nobody, everybody says, "No, you're right," or "You're wrong," or "You're kind of right," or "You're kind of wrong." But nobody in the city of Antioch or the council to date has said to me as a community member, "Let's pull out the reports and let's look at them and let's understand them." Because my interpretation, even looking at this staff report, is that there are deficits in these assessments. in these assessment districts. And so what are we filling those deficits with? And if there are deficits, are we increasing assessments? Or why are we not increasing assessments? Can we not? Because it is complex, and I'm confused. But then, when you drive through those areas, for instance, Pruitt Ranch, that median, I don't think has ever been replanted in over 30 years. And so I'm wondering where all these dollars have gone. I'm curious on why I can see staff reports and agendas and minute reports from the late 90s that say that there were developer agreements, that the original infrastructure from these assessment districts needed to be paid off before the, by the time the units were built, and then developers were asking for that to be deferred. And so then, were assessment districts paying for the debt service to create those bonds in those areas originally? And then, I started reaching out to council members from that period and talking to them and hearing that there was actually a lot of back and forth and dissent from some council members on the way these developer agreements and assessment, assessment districts were formed. And they say that these assessment districts, historically, were never going to be able to sustain the areas and these costs, these assessment fees were never going to be able to sustain the costs. And then, when you look in the staff report, it says in 1996 and then in 2001, 2003 air time period, it was the same thing, that they weren't sustaining the costs. So who came up with the cost for these assessment districts? And then, were there deferrals for developers? Did developers pay that debt service on those assessment districts? Are these the same assessment districts that paid the almost $100 million for Lone Tree Way? Are these tied to those assessment districts? Did some of those assessment districts have their debt service paid and then they're gone? What pays for the road repair? Not the center median or the light poles, but what pays for the roads and the sidewalks? Are those out of assessment fees and dollars? Because in one of these assessment districts, the city issued bonds for Frederickson Lane and paid $2 million to build Frederickson Lane for a developer. Why didn't the developer pay that? And if those assessments going forward were deferred from that developer on those bonds, and then to service that debt out of those assessment districts, you had to take future assessment dollars, which means that the assessment district didn't, wasn't able to build up and sustain for the actual ongoing maintenance, but was paying for the deferred initial debt service, is that why they're low? Is that an unfair assumption? Am I close? I'm very far off base? Could somebody then explain what paid for some of these roads? Because why do I see bonds that paid for Frederickson Lane? And why do I see minutes from the late 90s that say, "We should not be issuing these bonds, we gotta stop this development and put these costs on the developer"? Why was that a conversation within the council in the late 90s, early 2000s on these districts? Who was right, the people today or the people then? Because I'm genuinely confused. Because I thought these assessments were just for the maintenance of these lights and these medians and the landscaping, and you drive in other cities and their assessments can sustain their districts. But our, our districts are running deficits, but we're not getting new plants. And we're not getting repairs to sound walls. Are those a part of the assessment districts? Because they're crumbling too. For instance, Country Hill Manor, which is labeled in one of these assessment districts, right off of Deer Valley Road, has a sound wall that's crumbling and is about to fall. And from the last sound wall repair on Deer Valley Road, that was $400 to $600,000. Is that gonna come out of an assessment district? I guess those are my questions, and I hope somebody maybe tracks some of them, because if I am very far off base, please use some of the time tonight to explain to us how these assessment districts, I guess, work and where those assessment dollars went. Specifically for F U A 1 and F U A 2. Specifically for F U A 1 and F U A 2. Because ever since I was a child, those corridors have not been maintained, but they've run deficits. And that's all of southern Antioch, the Lone Tree Way corridor. Thank you.
Leslie May?
Okay, so I just, I really have some questions, because I'm, you know, I'm looking at neighborhood associations around Antioch and the fees they charge. What are these, what are these neighborhood associations good for? Why can't they have gardeners to clean up the entrances to these different named communities as Andrew just said his, I forgot the name of his community? I mean, as you coming up to turn into their streets, they should be cutting the grass, they should be cleaning up those areas. That should be part of the association fees, not just cutting people's front grass or whatever, the front yard. So I'm, I'm wondering why people are paying for these association fees, yet they're not getting anything out of it. When I lived in Livermore, in Springtown, it was up to us, the gardeners and different people, the associations, I mean, we had our own personal gardeners. But we also had parks in the middle, small parks, in the middle of each development. We had a golf course. Well, the golfers, their fees, that paid for the golf course to be maintained. But the large apartment structures over there, they're huge, their maintenance people had to make sure everything, even the curbs, if they had grass along the curbs, all that was trimmed and cleaned up, trees, all of that. And then I come out here and it's like, driving through those neighborhoods, I'm thinking, "Well, who is cleaning this up?", especially going up Lone Tree. And it just looks a mess. And I feel like the city is, is talking about charging people. And even with the sound walls, when the sound walls were, were put up, why wasn't there agreement with the developers that they would have to maintain those? They needed, that they agreed, when they were gonna build homes on that busy street, "Well, we gotta put up sound walls, because people are gonna be complaining about the sound." Well, they should have been the ones putting it up. They developed these neighborhoods. They should have been the ones maintaining them. Or the neighborhood association should be the ones maintaining that. They wanted to live there, they wanted to develop there, it should be maintained. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that the city is paying for, or asking for money for, levying this and to pay for, and it's not being done. And finally, I'm gonna say the trees that are along J Street from West Third to West Fifth, and then the side streets. So that would be, I don't know, J, let's see, K and I Streets, I guess. Those trees are overgrown. I've been watching those trees. They are so overgrown, they're growing up into the wires. When it comes, I guess whoever comes through, they just trim a little bit off of them. They don't cut those trees, they don't trim it right. You can't even see the street signs. The stop signs on my block, people run it all the time, you can't see it. The tree limbs are covering it. So, you know, that is dangerous, along with, to me, it's just been neglect in this area. And I don't know if this is one, how they're doing, this is my district one. So we definitely need that, along with the lighting. We've been crying about lights, my daughter and I have been for the longest, other people that come here have been crying about the, Tamisha cried about that. Everybody's talking about the lights. I mean, it's too easy to get mugged down my street. It's getting out my car to Golden House, that's how dark it is at night. And that should not be. So those are my remarks. I just feel that there's a lot of passing the buck here, and why are these people paying all these extraordinary, extraordinarily high association fees? Yet, what are they doing? Just having somebody tell you, "You can't paint your house that color," or "You have to do this, you can't do that, you can't do that." Well, what, where's all that money going? Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. So I do have a question about the streetlights. I, in my neighborhood, in the Bay Ridge neighborhood, I forgot what district that is, it's off of, was that district? The three of you off of Hillcrest? My house, I have a tree right there that unfortunately blocking the sidewalk. I don't have no lights on that side of the street, because one, a couple weeks ago, somebody broke into my parents' car and tried, attempted to steal my car in my driveway, and that tree was blocking the way. And two, they just should clean that Bear Ridge entranceway, because it's always so disgusting over there. Nobody do maintenance on that street, off Hillcrest and Golden Bear. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
No additional public comments received?
Go ahead and close the public hearing, and staff, City Council? Yeah, I didn't know, because I knew he didn't say, he has a proponent coming in to start with, but maybe to close out this item.
So, street lighting, we've been talking about that for a little while. We are cleaning up the contract documents for that right now, looking to get the project out to bid that would replace the existing lights with LEDs, most likely from the freeway north is what we're looking at, but we still need to get the scope squared away, not necessarily part of what we're talking about in terms of these assessments. In terms of, are all assessments the same? Some of the work that was done when we built out southeast Antioch was not this sort of assessments, but there were assessment districts that were utilized to build out structure and infrastructure in that area. Some of those funds were used for, like I say, building roadways. There was money that was left over that did more improvements, basically in the Deer Valley, Lone Tree, Hillcrest area, where some of these assessments left over from the construction of those, those areas. In terms of areas being maintained, our crews do take a look at every area, try to maintain it as best possible. If we do get a call, we respond and go take a look at the area, make sure that it is clean. Sometimes, we're talking about things that are in the way of lighting, people talking about their trees. Not every tree would belong to the city of Antioch. There could be your tree or a resident next to your trees that might need to be pruned up. Most of the trimming that you do see about wires is being done by PG&E to keep them away from the wires. They're not trying to prune your tree for anything else than to keep them off of the wires. Often, it does leave an unbalanced tree. What other questions would you like me to answer?
I think this, the issue of assessments and how they are paid, and there's a preamble in the staff report to us that does discuss one of the, the problems that happened in 2001 with the public vote. And so I think at maybe August, September at the latest, a study session where we actually take a look at how assessment districts were formed, how they are constrained, what a HOA, a homeowners association agreement does or does not do. And I, I think there's just too much confusion on this. And so if we had a very in-depth, you know, review in a study session, because there's, I don't think there's any particular action that needs to be taken, but I do think education is a very important prospect here. I mean, the fact that the public vote that occurred in March 2001 actually has caused the city by the millions of dollars on an annual basis, I think it's about, what, $4.7, $5 million of general fund money helps to subsidize lighting and landscaping districts. And so, but they're not the only districts. And so I think, you know, we need to go back to what was Mellow Roost District. I unfortunately was one of the ones who started paying at the end, and I still live in my house, I got to see my Mellow Roost finally terminate after 30-plus years. So there are, we did, we did, particularly 80s and 90s and 2000, did debt financing, used assessment, used Mellow Roost and others to pay for public infrastructure. I think there's so many questions. I, for one, as a council member, would like to have an in-depth discussion about this. I think some of the questions that, that Mr. Becker raised and Ms. May raised, let's, let's address them. And let's do this and get it over with, because we hear this every single year, and frankly, the city has not done an adequate job of addressing the issues that the public has asked. It's like, it's, you know, with regards to a public tree or not a public tree, I don't care whose tree it is, if it's blocking a stop sign, it needs to be trimmed. And, you know, we have city staff roaming all over the city. Clearly, if they're on a street and they see the stop sign, you know, is, is blocked, then they need to contact the appropriate person and say, "Go out there and trim the tree." You know, either the city, if it's a city tree, or you have the private owner come and cut the tree. But somebody needs to protect the public safety. So I, for one, would recommend to the council that maybe the third Tuesday, I don't know what the city manager and the mayor have planned for August and September, but a study session on the third Tuesday of either August or September, and we really do an in-depth discussion about assessment districts, homeowners association, and I think really, the question is development agreements. I think when, when people began to point the finger, it's not about assessment district, it's about development agreements that we need to take a look at. So it's all, I mean, if you're an insomniac, it could definitely be a cure for you, but I think that these issues are, are pertinent. They cost the taxpayers millions of dollars. And so let's, let's once and for all have a comprehensive, in-depth discussion about the different financing and what happened to the original lighting and landscaping district, what occurred in March 2001 when the voters turned down a citywide lighting and landscaping district. And one of the biggest reasons and the biggest difference between Brentwood and between Antioch with their landscaping is their landscaping, their lighting and landscaping districts were approved and they were never rescinded or cut back. So they have full funding, we haven't since 2001. So that would be my recommendation, you know, for the council's consideration.
Quick question about the 2001, was it just lack of education on that particular vote? Public education on that?
To my opinion?
Yeah.
I, I think it's twofold. I think that it was a, it was complicated subject. We had a very tumultuous 1990s. Our citizens didn't trust the city, didn't trust government, and sure did not want to have additional taxes. And for most of the people in southeast Antioch, you have to realize, we were paying Mellow Roost, there were the bridge districts, there were the lighting and landscaping districts. My house, in my particular subdivision, which I have lived in over 35 years, was in every single assessment district in southeast Antioch. But when you got your bill? It was almost like cardiac arrest. I mean, the assessment on my house was basically 40 to 50% of all the other assessments. I mean, Mellow Roost was into the thousands of dollars. And so, and, and frankly, the Mellow Roost... the Melrose, John Tasker was the, the former director of finance. And, you know, we did some interesting refunding of some of the assessment districts. Instead of letting the, the Melrose go to what it was originally designed to do, we shortened it. Why? Because citizens in the community were tired of paying the, the taxes and assessment. And frankly, I, you could have one house that was not in Melrose next to a house that was in Melrose, and the difference on your tax bill was into the thousands of dollars. And I remember real estate people putting up signs saying, "Not in Melrose" as a way to sell the house. You know, so that's, you know, so I think there was just an anti-tax feeling. Uh, and this, you know, this built up from the 80s to the 90s into 2000.
2000s. Yeah, and I'm in full agreement with you about, we do need a study session on the education of how these assessment districts are set up, and so, and then we also need to look at everything.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Years and years. So yeah, I'm in full agreement with, 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 uh, setting up the study sessions for that.
Well, and it's clear that, that we're not able to stay up with the needs that we, for lighting, landscaping in our different districts throughout the city. It, it's clear that development, that's, we're looking at new development coming forward. We have to do our very best to make sure that we are um, getting, um, the assessments that are due from those developers, whatever types of agreements we can establish moving forward. I think I've been asked before, we up here um, as council members, we don't have the authority, the ability to just raise assessments just on our own. It's something, it's a public citizen's decision. It, it goes before the people. I recall when I was principal of Antioch High School and the high school was falling apart, and all the other schools around the East Contra Costa County were getting new development, like at Pittsburgh High, you look at Liberty High, and we were stuck with old schools, old facilities, and we had to look at a bond measure, and that wasn't an easy thing to do. It did not pass the first time we ran it in the June primary. And then we had to do a really good job of being transparent and showing images of what our challenges were at Antioch High School in comparison to other schools in the, in the area. And, um, the first time we ran the bond measure in June, um, we, it was 55% to pass the, the measure, and we were at 49.7. We never got to 55. Um, and then people were so upset by the outcome, that a lot of people approached me as principal, so they wanted to get on board as alumni, it's what we could do. Uh, we, I thought did a very good job of being transparent, open, showing what our facilities lacked, what our classrooms look like, the lack of technology, et cetera. And we were able to pass it, I think, at 63% in November. So I do think that we need to educate ourselves, we need to educate our community on where we are at, what, what, what the deficit may be in these annual fees and assessments we collect with the overall cost it is to, um, take care of the needs of our city streets, lighting, uh, and, uh, the other items that have been discussed tonight. And, um, that's, I think that would be a really healthy discussion for us to have.
Mr. Bunning, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the March 2001, when it was a public vote and it was defeated, what that, what triggered was that we then had a maximum assessment. And we could never increase that unless we went back to a vote of the people, which we haven't done. But what did happen was that in June of 2001, if my memory serves me correct, for all new, uh, developments, there are assessments, and they do have inflationary provisions in them, so they continue to increase. So you have a city that, you know, some, some areas don't get the same service as other areas because of the assessment. But what we have tried, tried to do to equalize that is for those districts that turned down the citywide assessment, the city of Antioch through its general fund, I, I think it's, correct me, around $5 million this year, you know, subsidizes these, these assessments. So what you will find is disparity in assessments throughout the city of Antioch. And, I mean, some were voter-approved. And while we, in 2025, may look back and say, "Gee, that was wrong", it was right for the people. I mean, they have a right to make a decision, and that's the decision they made. And there are consequences to every vote we have. So if I'm wrong, please correct me, but... So I, I do think this is important, and when staff comes forward, I mean, you'll have to discuss it with the mayor and the city manager when we do this. But, you know, having maps, you know, about where the, the prior districts are, where the new districts are, I would assume that we have, uh, where there are HOAs, I would assume our CAD system has that. You know, but maybe not, I don't know. But I mean, the, the issue that Ms. May brought, I think is a valid issue. You know, for, especially for entrances to some of these subdivisions, whose responsibility is it? You know, for the, the bears on, uh, Hillcrest, you know, the weeds that are around there, whose responsibility is it? Um, I think it's the city's, but that's, I'm guessing, but I'm pretty sure it is. Uh, and, you know, so, so those are some of the questions, and, and, you know, if you take 10 minutes, or matter of fact, Mr. Becker, I would ask you to send in writing, you know, to Mr. Bunning, some of those questions that you have, so that we can, so he can see them, and we can discuss them and move forward.
I agree. Any other comments? I was just gonna say, can entertain a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
The motion passes 3-0.
Are there additional public comments at this time? Okay, Mr. Becker?
Andrew Becker.
Thank you. So on the 24th of this month, the city is looking to at its Board of Administrative Appeals levy almost $400,000 in liens against property owners here in the city of Antioch, which may be a standard practice for the city, except these are liens that date back to 2022. And my frustration is that my frustration, a couple of frustrations, but my frustration right now is that, um, as I'm going through the list, I happen across a property where I know the property owner. So I reach out to him, and he had acquired a property on Lone Tree Way over by Sylvia's and had started, um, wanting to use the property with a food, uh, space in the front. And so he had started using that. And he had gotten a citation from the city, or a couple of citations. And he didn't know the process, and so he found out he needed a use permit, so started down the road of the process of getting a use permit, which takes a while here in the city of Antioch sometimes. And so he gets his use permit and is operating the property, and his understanding was that that corrected the issue, and, um, it did not. He needed to pay the tickets and understandably, right? That's the process. But my frustration is that the city takes these old liens or these old citations and puts these liens out, and he doesn't remember receiving any notice for this meeting on the 24th. He didn't know anything about it, and he can't come 'cause he's in Mexico with his family. And he doesn't know if the city will let somebody come and speak on his behalf. So he's gonna try to reach out to the city and rectify it. But at the same time, he's struggling in the process of using his property properly and going through these steps and trying to correct them. I'm driving down to City Hall. And last council meeting I drove down, and as I'm coming down West 10th at 10:30, 10:60 West 10th, there is one of those old auto dealership lots that's in a bad state, right? Going down towards the old, uh, uh, Bonfire. And it had been empty for a long time, and now it's filled up with used cars to sell. And I thought, "That's strange," 'cause I know the downtown specific plan, and I know that that's designated CN, so I know that you can't do that. Auto sales and auto rentals are prohibited in that district. So I thought, "That's weird." And then next week, I see that there's U-Hauls out front. Now he's renting U-Hauls out of it, which also is prohibited. So I reached out to the city, and they said, "Put it on C Click Fix." So I did, and nothing's happened, and it grew. But then as I'm driving down tonight, I go by John's Lawn Mowers over there on A Street, and they're selling tires out of the parking lot. That's my time, but I think we get the picture here. Where does code enforcement's time truly need to be spent?
Leslie May? No other public comments?
Okay, then we'll move on to staff communications. Are there any staff communications this evening?
No.
Yeah, you're, you're the staff, Derek, you're the staff tonight.
I have nothing to say.
Council communications and future agenda items?
The assessments. And I think, Mr. Becker, there's a member of the Administrative Appeals Board sitting to your left that you might want to have a discussion with. Good. Good. I hope you yelled at her.
Ms. Wilson, did you have something?
No, I can, I can hold on to it.
Okay. Um, okay, so there's no more comments from either of us? None from me? So, um, I guess at this point, we move to motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, vote?
The motion to adjourn at 7:53 PM passes 3-0.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you.